The meeting has come, so we're calling meeting orders. Kelsey, would you please be the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelsey. Okay, next we have the agenda approval.
I have something that came in last minute. I've already added it. If one of you would be so kind as to put it on the agenda, it's 7F. Vote whether or not to continue paying the Pickens Beautiful Operatinging Support Fee.
How much is it?
$612.
And we've been paying it each year?
Sporadically. One year we will, one year we won't. And it came in last minute, so I wanted to cover that.
Do you think I can make a motion in charge of adding that to our agenda?
Can I make a motion add to the agenda?
Oh, second. Motion second. All in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Any amendments? Okay, next we have, here, I'd like to add another agenda item. Okay, what's that?
This is a proposal to... Put the cash reserve fund proposal, which we voted on back in November of '10 unanimously. And I'll just pass that out as a reminder. This is the recommendation, and it fits consistent with what we're doing today, which is to look at the annual of our closeout of our budget for the year.
Do you want to put that in when we're discussing the budget amendments? Or did you want to know this separate?
It fits with it. I mean, wherever council wants, but it needed to be included, I think, in tonight's meeting. Not exactly in emergency, but it's consistent with what we had already adopted, and we need to take some action to implement it. I make a motion to include this as an additional agenda item. Where do you want to put it at?
Did you want to put it before or after the 6B?
Do before.
Okay.
So you won't put it at the beginning of the unfinished business, is that what you want?
In between the two?
New business, between A and B. I don't know if that's AA or that's BB.
Okay, do we, you want to make a motion, that section, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Any amendments? All right, can I move along then? Has everybody flipped over the minutes as provided? We have the minutes of the July 3, 2017. We'll have to entertain a motion to approve and the amendments to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Okay, next we have a July 13, 2017 work session meeting. Has everybody looked over the minutes on that? Have any questions?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Sounds good.
If I make a motion, a second to approve, the minutes is mailed on July 13. All in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Nope. And next we have Department of Reports, is this, say, the 13th of the month?
Okay, financial report. We are off to a great start in the 2018 fiscal year. It seems as if the invoices that are from the last fiscal year have all been accounted for, and the audit will begin on November 13. Included with this report is an updated copy of the capital improvement plan and budget. This includes the additions that were voted on at the July 13 meeting. Please note that the budget for the pavilion is $51,917 rather than $90,000 due to the fact that $38,083 of that was used to demolish the marble building. The $2,400 for the community center can be found under SPOS 4 fiscal year 2018. And those are both highlighted on the next page. On Monday, July 17, 2017, Mayor Larry Ray along with the other mayors and clerks met at Canton City Hall and signed the intergovernmental sales tax agreement. Included is a photo from the front page of one of our local papers commemorating the event. Mayor Ray will be here after the meeting for autographs, if anyone's interested. The Cherokee County Board of Commissioners voted in favor of the intergovernmental sales tax agreement, so the next step will be, it'll go to the state and then on the ballot for vote in November.
That's for Cherokee County?
Yes. The next Cherokee County is SPOS 5, and we should start seeing funds from that in either September or October of 2018.
Yes, approved.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Maintenance. Mr. Fawcett has been mowing weed eating and brush hogging, excuse me, it's supposed to be brush hog, banks around the city. We have gotten many compliments about how nice the city is looking, including a note that I added a copy of for everyone's review. That's following. It just says, "Just wanted to let you folks know how good your little town looks. I spent quite a lot of time down there helping Ms. Crowe, and I appreciate all your hard work." So I did Ricky a copy of that, too, and he made his day. Let's see. The portable fuel tank is working out great. Not only does it save Ricky a ton of time running back and forth to get fuel, but the cost savings of going through Jones Oil has also been nice. There is an agenda item in regards to maintenance later on in the agenda. Sanitation. There has continued to be a steady increase in sanitation accounts. Quarterly bills were sent out in July, and payments have been coming in daily. There is an agenda item regarding sanitation later on in the agenda. Information on the August 17, 2017 work session meeting. The work session for this month is scheduled to be on Thursday, August 17, 2017, at 7:00 PM. The engineer will be here to present the findings of the camera inspection of the drainage pipes on Cherokee Avenue. He's gonna burn the projector and put it up on the wall and try to come up with a summary, because you can only watch so much water flow through pipes before it gets a bit mountainous. But there were no ninja turtles, sad to say. All right. And then miscellaneous. The security cameras have been an excellent asset to the city as it has allowed for us to assist the police in several situations. The EW High Tower Lodge is having the barbecue fundraiser on August 26. I included a copy of the flyer, in case you all are interested. I also wanted to bring to the council's attention that I'm doing some improvements around City Hall as time allows. An example of this is the bulletin board on the front of the building, as well as the one that hangs behind the counter. I wish I would have taken before photos, but included are the after. Sometimes the smallest improvements can make a huge difference, and I want to make the place welcoming to both residents and visitors of the museum. No money was spent to update the boards as I used what was already at City Hall. I also invested in a butt can so that those that smoke have a proper way to dispose of their cigarettes. And barring any questions, that is it.
Anybody have any questions?
Sure. On the community center, you, I don't know, are you gonna talk about this later on the approval of the capital improvement?
No, we can talk about it now.
Okay. Well, you did the community center, and you subtracted out the cost of the demolition. We're gonna need to revise how much money we put into the pavilion, though. But basically, the demolition of the marble building was done illegally, because we used Cherokee County SPOS money to do it, and I don't know if we have to reimburse them or how that plays. But obviously, we're not gonna cite it there at that location, so if we have to put it at a new location, we need to go back to the $90,000 budget that was established.
And in that case, when I spoke to the auditor, she's supposed to get back to me in more detail, she wanted to look into it. When she spoke, when I spoke to her in reference to that, she said that we can't, because Pickens doesn't have anything for parks, so we can't pay it back out of Pickens, like, for example, have Pickens SPOS pay back Cherokee.
Right.
It would have to come out of the general fund. So the general fund would have to pay.
No, it wouldn't have. You could take it out of the coming SPOS money from the next cycle through.
And you're talking about paying it back to our SPOS funds, right? Not paying it back to Cherokee County?
Correct.
Well, but if it was money spent in Pickens, then we'd have to pay, we'd have to pay Cherokee back.
No, I'm not trying to pay them back. I'm trying to re-allocate money from...
He's trying to get the budget back.
The budget back to $90,000, which is what it's gonna take to build a pavilion.
Yes, but in order to do that, we're gonna have to reimburse that.
Why do, ask her? We have to. We probably don't have to.
Well, that's why I'm hoping, that's why I didn't bring it up, because that's one of the things that, well, I'll bring it up at a future meeting when I get a, when she gives me a concrete conclusion or how.
I'm gonna need you at some point to decide we're not gonna spend $90,000 for a pavilion out in the woods.
Except we had unanimous to do it.
Except?
And it's been in there since 2013.
Except we decide the expenditures as we go along?
Well, I understand. And so my point is, the opposite of yours, we need to build the pavilion. It's another opportunity.
We're gonna be moving it out down there where you're up.
That would be great.
It's my prerogative now, are you with me? But I thought we made sure we could fight this demolition out of SPOS before we're done with demolition.
We did, but that was by playing with a different set of rules. And when Tina and Kelsey took it down there, they said, "Nope, can't do that."
But I thought we asked before we did.
We did.
I think we did. But somebody's changing their mind after we did.
Well, the question got raised, and we got straightened out. It grew wrong. We didn't do, did incorrect. I mean, we did ask before.
I know we did.
Yeah. Well, I'm done discussing. I just like, at some point, we need to come back to that and refresh.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll bring it up. I just, the reason I didn't bring it up now is because I didn't have...
Kinda complicated, yeah. I would've left the 90 yen, but now I gotta go put it back in again, fight with the mayor.
Give you something a little forward.
Yeah. Give Kelsey something a little forward, too. Between the two. Do you think you could arm up like this, and that would end it?
That's true.
I would know what a $90,000 pavilion looks like.
And what would it be used for?
I don't know.
Okay, moving right along. Discuss the progress of the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan. That's number 6A.
Uh, let's see. We're coming around to the next meeting for the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan, which will take place on August 22 at 6:30 PM in the basement of the Pickens County Administration Building. At the last meeting, which took place on June 20, there was a review of the results of the surveys that were submitted by citizens. Included with this is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation for your review. There's a lot of interesting facts and figures in here, if y'all wanna take time to look it over when you get a chance. The council is welcome to attend these meetings, but the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission is also asking that we find some residents of the city to participate. So far, the meetings will be only once a month, or even once every other month, so it's not too much of a commitment. But if we're going to do this right, we need as much input as possible. Please understand that this is open to all residents of the city of Nelson, regardless of what county they are in. So basically, I'm asking the council, I'd say, with, by Friday, if possible. Friday is the deadline, so that I can get with these people, to give me some names of people that they think would be valuable contributors to serve as stakeholders through this process. Now, if y'all wanna contact them and then tell them to call City Hall and give me their information, that's fine. But basically, they're just gonna discuss what they want, what they think we need, and it gives you a better end effect when you have contributors. I mean, and they said you can have two, you know, they're saying keep it under 10, because if you get more than 10, then it becomes crazy. So it's not necessarily a voting item, that's just the Friday deadline fees.
Okay, next we have, yes?
Could I comment on that?
Sure.
So that next meeting on the 22nd, is they're gonna talk about SWAP, strengths, weaknesses, some opportunities, whatever it is, it's a standard planning thing. Would you be able to put together something for us that would represent Nelson's contribution to the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities facing the city?
Yes.
And then that could be presented, represent the city's contribution to that planning process? Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're moving on to the item we put in, the transfer of funds for the, from the cash reserve fund.
To the cash reserve fund.
Mike, this is your proposal. Do you wanna take the lead on it?
Sure. So basically, this, we adopted this, and you all knew at the time, it was your first meeting. And we adopted unanimously that we establish a cash reserve fund, and we derive from the transfer of the unexpected balances and surplus funds at the conclusion of each year. So when Tina gives her report on that, the final statement, you'll, we'll see what, if any, we have left. We have a lot left. Thus, the cities should take action to transfer their surplus funds at the end of the 2017 fiscal year to reach the 20% of its 2018 general fund, which amounts to $89,908. Those cash reserve funds should then be placed in a separate CD cash reserve account, subject to the approved purposes, uses, and limitations, as well as the withdrawal, voting requirements, limitations, and replenishment requirements. And all of that's written out in that first sheet that I passed out to, which we adopted. So the action that I would recommend is to vote to approve the transfer of $89,908 of surplus funds into the establishment of a cash reserve fund as approved by the city council of 8/7/2017. Actually, 8/10. That's the wrong date, it was.
No, it's the right day.
Is that the right date?
Today's the 7th.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. So we're just basically implementing what we approved before, and the notion is that we have a separate CD account. And I think, Tina, there's already some money in reserve, but I'm not positive. But we need to bring it, if you mix and match the two, what our surplus is now and what's already in the accounts, that's the number we need to get up to. In other words, that's 20% of our general fund budget. And that's a very standard amount of money that cities will put away in a cash reserve.
Do we have those funds available at this time, Tina?
Yes.
Do we have an account? We probably need, well, we need to open another CD. What does it take for a token CD down there to bank?
I'll have to call tomorrow and see.
How much do we already have? We got 30 some odd thousand?
I believe so, something like that, off the top of my head. But we'll see, but we can either, I know there's a savings, but if we wanna list it in a separate account, specifically list it as the cash reserve fund. And then I would also sit down, I'd also go to the bank and sit down and see what the best way to perhaps accrue interest on that, what kind of account. Would it be best to do a CD or whatever have you? Because our other CDs are not bringing in the best amount of money. So I would, you know, once we, if we approve this, I'll go to the bank and make an appointment and tell them, hey, you know, what is the best way that we can put this money aside and, while we're at it, build some interest on it?
Good.
Yeah. We could consider an open reserve, this reserve, and of course, upon this, we're gonna have it available to us.
Right. Unless you put it into a whole bunch of series, I mean, you could do that, that's...
I really just didn't want a count for it.
Find out what they say, what they're...
I could bring that information back at the work session, give you all the details from there.
Okay, so, can I make a motion?
Sure. Vote to approve the transfer of $89,908 of surplus funds into the establishment of the cash reserve fund as approved by the city council on 8/7/2017.
We have a second?
Do we vote on that now, or do we vote on it after she's gotten the information on the CDs we know?
Actually, I think we could vote on it.
Never come back. I don't know where she's, where she's gonna put it.
Anybody want a second?
I would just rather know where it's going on before. But, I mean, I would feel more comfortable doing it at the work session, voting on it at the work session, once she has the information to where it's gonna end up, like with the CD and the interest rate on it.
So table it until we get more information?
Just until the work session.
Can we vote on it at the work session?
If we have a regular meeting there?
Yep, that's fine.
Need anybody's approval?
Sure.
Okay, you want to just table it to the work session?
Bring back her information.
Yeah, just 'cause it was an honor for any of us to know anything about the event.
Fine.
Okay, we're gonna table that to our work session. We'll discuss and vote to approve amendments for 2017 fiscal year budget. That's number 6B.
Okay, let's see. There were a few police expenses this year due to the lack of a police department. However, that turned out to be a blessing, and that there were a lot of expenses elsewhere that needed to be taken care of. An example of this was the numerous repairs to the maintenance equipment that were not budgeted for but needed to be done. When I initially submitted this, I did not have this document. I added an update. Included with this description is a budget amendment worksheet. The green column was the 2017 fiscal year budget numbers. The yellow column was the year-to-date actual, and the pink column is the difference. The amounts that I'm asking the council to approve are those that are in the yellow column, and I can, kind of, let me get this out of my binder.
What is red over expense, the next column?
That comes in the other, in another category there. Basically, if you look, the annual budget, now, we're starting off with revenues, that's the first section there. That's what we're bringing in, the money that's coming in. We anticipated 441.7. We got 455, 655.70, and that's a difference of $13,955.70. That came from the addition of local option sales tax from Pickens was higher than expected, and there was also a large amount received under building permits and inspections because of universal stair. That was close to $15,000 that was not accounted for. But you can also see, so it's gonna be a bit confusing. So if we look in expenditures, what we have here is, so in the difference column, the ones not in the brackets show the money that, show the differences, the way, it's gonna, that's, I'm sorry, the way I did this, it's the way the computer does it, and it's confusing because it's gonna change its definition once we get down here into the expenditures. But you can see the differences. So just, like, local option sales tax, $104,000 was budgeted. We received $121,019.23. That's a difference of $17,019.23. So there are...
Increase of $17,000.
Yes, yes. And see, the reason it's confusing is because, like, the ones in the bracket show an increase up here, it's a decrease in the other. Once you get down to the expenditures. I just wanted, there's one thing here, which was really off, in administrative expenditures on page two. We budgeted, it looks like we only budgeted for Girmah for $3,900, but the year-to-date actual was $10,000, because instead of separating it into sections and guesstimating, because they don't necessarily break it up into sections and say, "This much for this or this much for that," so it made more sense to consolidate it. So that $6,000 is actually not accurate. That one's gonna throw off, because in the annual budget, it was, there were small amounts broken down into each department for Girmah, where we went ahead and just consolidated it in one. But in the end, if you get down to, let's see. One, two, three. On the fourth page, down at the bottom, this is where that revenues and where expenditures comes into play. So where this number comes from is, you take the 455, 655.70 that we had come in, you subtract the $339,295.46 that we actually spent, and that's where you come up with the $116,360.24.
Say that one more time. You take the 441?
No, no, year-to-date, this is a year-to-date figure.
455?
Yeah, the 455, yellow column, 455, 655.70, and you subtract 339,295.46, and that's where that number comes up. That's your revenues and where expenditures.
So revenues are actually $428,700, and our expenditures are $339,295.46.
No, we brought in $455,655.70. So in other words, my point is, is that we're not in the right, we're the opposite. So we have the money to go ahead and do that.
Transfer.
The transfer now. So what, instead of trying to come up with this individual thing, I just went ahead and said that we could approve the year-to-date actual is our budget amendments?
And this will cover all the overruns that we had supposedly from last year that we're gonna, we're all paid for now. I mean, if anything, that's gonna come back by us.
Not that I'm aware of. But even if there is something that may come back, we have that cushion.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna entertain a motion to...
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. One more thing that I just wanted, I'm sorry, I wanted to, okay. The Cherokee County fire tax, that doesn't, that's, that's a viewpoint. Sorry, I was thinking of the other report when I did the budget, the budget proposal, that's why it came up, is that big of a difference?
Is the Cherokee County fire tax going up this year?
Actually, this year it went up, but the new year it's going down. They lowered the fire tax military.
Okay, did we get Cherokee County fans?
Yes, it was $89,084.51. I'm a little bit glad, well, I'm a lot glad that we have this cushion here, because... last year we paid close to eighty-one thousand and I couldn't, like, it was eighty thousand dollars and change. And I couldn't figure out why there was such a huge difference because the military rate really didn't jump up drastically. The problem was is that the wrong military rate was used to calculate when we made the payment last year. So it actually should have been eighty-seven thousand dollars, not eighty-nine thousand that was paid out last year. Uh, excuse me, it, you know, it was like eighty thousand and change and it should have been eighty-seven thousand and change. Uh, but when I spoke to Cherokee County, they did not, you know, I was like, if you want to, you know, please let us know sooner rather than later, if you want us to make up the difference. And they said that they didn't pick up on the mistake, so they weren't concerned about it.
Have you had any, have you heard any feedback on the, the changes in the Cherokee County Fire Department? In relation to the volunteer fire department?
No.
Okay, we'll, if anybody wants to enter a motion on budget amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the two thousand seventeen fiscal year budget.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, let me, I'm going to raise your right hand. Get your hands. Okay. Next, we have vote to approve the engagement agreement for the two thousand seventeen fiscal year audit with Welch and Walker. That's seven A. That is the fourteen thousand dollars that they've given this year compared to what we paid last year. Fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Actually, we'll break these down. I believe last year it was fifteen thousand and change, so it went down.
I feel like it's just a ball.
Well, I mean, I've spoken to other cities about how much they're paying for their audits and it was enough to make me shed quite a few tears. So honestly, it seems, this might, this may seem like a lot, but when you talk and see what other cities are paying their auditors, it's really, it's chump change, to be honest with you. And this year I've made it, um, I've kind of went through, you know, at the audit report, I'm sorry, give me one second, David. At the audit report, they give, um, you know, the little notes that they give us. I have gone back over the past couple of years and tried to incorporate and come up with ideas to combat the negatives and try to turn.
They're going to make the same negatives every year. They have to make so many ones, they're always the same.
Well, it did get better last year and the hope is that we'll improve it this year. We went from what, eight pages to four pages? That was a huge improvement.
What was your question?
My only concern is this Splos deal. I mean, we got permission to tear down that building from her. Now she's changing her mind, uh, after it's all said and done. That's disturbing. Looks bad on us and she's once gone troubling.
Any other comments or questions about?
I don't know what we can do about it. I mean, we're hurting mercy on everything, but that's why we asked her if it's okay.
Well, I think it was a misunderstanding as far as once, I think it was originally understood that once the city got the money, they could deal with it as they wanted. And the actual way it's worded is that Cherokee County Splos only applies to Cherokee County, Pickens County Splos only applies to Pickens County. And because it's so rare that you have a city that's in two counties, that, you know, people wouldn't necessarily know that. So I don't think there was any intention to mislead us. I think it was more just, you know, ignorance.
All right, all right.
Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion to vote to approve the engagement agreement for the two thousand seventeen fiscal year audit with Welch and Walker and Associates.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve engagement of Welch, Walker for auditor. All in favor, let me, I'm going to raise your right hand. Get your hands. Okay. Discuss and vote through the agreement for offender supervision services with Georgia probation. And we haven't seen one of these before. If you look through there, it's pretty complicated, but that's the agreement that we would have to have them handle our probation for us. Which basically they, they charge the fees to the offender, which is pretty much a standard practice of every municipal government in Georgia. I guess it's all unanimous in that. Who does, who does Holly Springs?
Holly Springs does theirs in-house.
In-house.
But can't use this Georgia probation anymore because it does state court of Cherokee.
Which we don't have any, it doesn't entertain any expense or cost.
No, it's no expense, uh, no expense to the city. And I also called and spoke with the company in regards to the fact that we may need to terminate early. If the police department is not reinstated, they said that it was no problem, just to make sure to send notice and writing along with the explanation and the agreement can be dissolved.
Any other comment or discussion?
I think I should approve.
We have a motion with second? Yes, ma'am?
So my thinking is, if it's easy to terminate it, it's probably easy to just start it up again. And if we're not in the police business right now, which we're not, I think we should just defer it. I mean, and wait until.
That's only a question for Jeff.
Well, I mean, citizens, it costs anything to me. There's no harm in having it in place without having to worry about entering back into it. It'd be one more thing to have to do. It just doesn't get utilized. We have no, and honestly, we haven't had that many probationers in the past. They don't do a lot for us. I mean, occasionally you want somebody to go on probation.
It doesn't necessarily, they have to have it.
So we have to be able to put people on probation. At no cost to the city, it's a.
We may even have a police department on these days. People may wake up.
Because until, unless we totally are not doing it, it's my opinion that we should maintain all of the availability.
Covering all bases.
Okay, so you made a motion to approve and we had a second. All in favor, let me, I'm going to raise your right hand. It's three, four, three. And all opposed, raise your right hand. So loaded, four, I mean, one opposed. Okay, discuss and vote for the city's policy regarding working private property.
All right, this. There has been a recent influx of calls from citizens requesting that Mr. Fossett use city equipment on city time in order to do maintenance or projects on their private property. When told that the city does not do work on private property, several of these residents have come back and said that when the other guy was here, he would do it all the time. Some of these residents even went so far as to admit having paid him for the work that he had done on their property while he was on the clock for the city using city equipment. I realize that we cannot change the past, but I wanted the council to be aware of what went on. I also received an unsigned letter, which is included with this, threatening the city with the media if we continue to care for properties such as the one directly across from City Hall. I can only assume that it is from one of the residents that was angry about not having the city maintain their private property since it arrived shortly after I received a phone call with similar wording. It is not that I don't want to help people in need, however, it is not fair. And as the expression goes, if we do for one, we have to do for everyone. The fact, in fact, I have taken time during non-work hours, not getting paid to research and try to come up with a list of contact information from various agencies and churches that do outreach and might be able to help. Another factor is the legal and liability aspect. If one thing were to go wrong, the city could be liable and our insurance will not cover that type of thing. To avoid further problems and to be able to offer clarity to residents, I'm asking the council to approve a policy in regards to work being done on private property by city employees during city time using city equipment. Now, there are properties that we've maintained for years because it, you know, like, we do more, we do the right ways, obviously. But what I'm talking about, these residents are calling and saying, you know, I have kudzu taking over my backyard. Send Ricky over, have him come cut all the kudzu down and spray it down. Or I have a tree in my backyard that's going to fall on my house, send Ricky down to cut the tree out.
I'll try my best, I think you can do that, if you're going to do that.
Yeah, you know, and it's just, you know, when I spoke with our insurance, the liability aspect is if we take our equipment off the right of way and put it on their private property, let's see that Ricky were to decide to conquer the huge tree and it fell on the house, then that's the city's, you know, that one.
Well, hopefully we're not taking down any trees and I don't think that we're maintaining properties other than, that, and what would, uh, what would would improve the appearance of the city. You know, and I, like this property down here adjacent to City Hall, it'd be my recommendation, we talk to Georgia Marble or Blue Ridge Marble Company and see if we could, could lease it for purpose of maintenance if nothing else, because it helps the city. Yeah, I can't think that we're, can you think of any area that we're maintaining that?
The only other property that I had a complaint about is that one that is on the other side. The complaints are people that I think have, for lack of a better term, a bone to pick with the marble company because they're saying that we're maintaining all the marble company properties. When in fact, the one that they were referring to, which is us, marble plant, other side, where the pool used to be. Um, that isn't even owned by Georgia. That's not owned by the marble company. That's owned by someone and I believe it just went up in tax sale. So I'm not sure who the new owners are and maybe the new owners will be more apt to maintain it. What we do is keep the kudzu, you know, we maintain a certain aspect of it the right of way because the kudzu was getting to the point where it was taking over everything. So that's why we had maintained that area there. But, uh, just because when people call, you know, I don't, I can tell them no and they said, well, I'm going to call Larry Ray or I'm.
I don't hope you didn't tell them that the whole time. That we don't, that we can't maintain their properties.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's become an issue and the calls were getting quite frequent. I was getting four or five calls a week for a while there, mostly from the same people that said, well, you know, you did it before, so why wouldn't you do it now? And like, well, I'm sorry, that's just not the way, you know, that's, it's not going to happen.
I mean, you can say it's illegal because it's illegal. We cannot maintain private property. People, cities get in trouble for that kind of thing all the time.
Yeah.
Because you're doing a benefit, you know, public benefit, the one individual, the other individuals aren't.
I mean, and that's why I kind of looked at if we do for one.
If you're buying, if you can lease a piece of property even for nobody, in that situation we could, but we would need some kind of arrangement like that. That would work. If there was something that's we needed to maintain, we would need that level of.
I think we, you know, everything we've been mowing and maintaining, you know, the compliments as far as the city looking good comes from the diligence that, that Ricky and others have put into, to maintaining the, the right of ways. Do you think of any that we need, that we're doing now? You know, like I said, if, if we're doing, I don't, I don't know if we're doing this from down here or not. I think that Georgia Marble's doing that.
Well, I think that the past employee did that. I, I don't know if the past city did that. Anyone's usually like to be honest or help out somebody.
Because I, I consider us doing it because.
And then we also have some lots which, you know, they didn't understand that the city owns. Like up there on Pickens Street, we have one down here on Blue Ridge, which are owned by the city. So Ricky is mowing them and maintaining them and they didn't understand, like, oh, well, you know, that's our property and that's why he's mowing that.
I heard the tax sale up here on the north end of, the, the street out a year ago.
I don't know how that one went, but I know the one on North Avenue sold.
Who did sell to?
Uh, I don't know. I'm still waiting to hear.
Which one?
Do you know where Eric Jones lives?
Yeah, one there.
The one right next to it, the white one?
Well, in the corner.
Well, that is not just.
One, I think it's one sixty-four North Avenue. And that, I'm thinking that that one, because I didn't get any, I got the call at the last minute about past due property tax, so they may have beat the clock on that one.
Uh, they've usually paid it up, you know, the, the, uh, we've, we've got some, one of these days, these people coming in buying up these relatively cheap properties and renting them out. You know, it's evident already they're deteriorating. And, uh, you know, we got potential of, you know, of increasing our, our slum areas already. There's some of the purchases that's already been made. But anyway, we, we were discussing the, uh, working on private property. I think we'll entertain a motion, but I want to make a motion that we.
I'll make a motion that the city employees do not do work on private property in the city, but not on city time.
We have a second. Okay, we have a second. All in favor, let me, I'm going to raise your right hand. Your hands.
Who was the second?
David. Okay, discuss and vote on the city's policy regarding trade off of trash service due to non-fee.
What I have, uh, quarterly sanitation bills went out in the month of July and those that were seriously, seriously delinquent were turned off for service. This was not something that anyone wants to do, but rather something that needs to be done. As can be expected, people were upset. Just a few months back, there were, there was five thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents written off because the accounts were seriously delinquent and we had been unable to collect. At that time, I felt it necessary to become diligent in maintaining and keeping up with the city sanitation accounts. Included with this are two versions of the current sanitation policy that is given out to residents when they begin trash service. The wording of both is the same, but the second version is a bit more screwed up and made to look uniform with our other documents. This document is also used as guidelines when current customers call and ask questions. So what I did, this was the one that we had approved, I believe it was Mar, in March of two thousand and sixteen. Um, I just went ahead and kind of changed it around and also changed the order. I went back and changed the order that, uh, some of these things were in. I thought that it was important to list the service rate as number one as opposed to number four. Just kind of, and we had approved this, let's see here, it said services will be suspended if quarterly payment isn't received before the next billing cycle. Reconnection fee is twenty dollars if your service becomes suspended. So because this was approved a while ago, I just wanted to make everyone aware of it. Make sure that there were, weren't any changes anybody wanted to make. I give everybody, um, if we make any changes, what I'll do with the next trash bill cycle that comes out, I'll send a copy. But when people come in and open accounts, uh, they, if they have questions or when they open accounts, they get a copy of this and I go over it with them. So they're aware that, you know, this is our rules and regulations. So it's clear, you know, but I mean, people are used to it not being turned off, which is how we wound up with that large amount that we wrote off some time back. And, um, they think I'm mean because I, I turn their trash off, but I don't want to be mean. I don't want to turn people's trash off, but if you're, you know, if we were the water company or the trash company or the electric company.
Everybody else does it, so I just say shouldn't be in the feed, so somebody else.
How did that one turn out that I called you about? Did he commit the pay?
No.
So we got it turned off, right? Uh, now, one thing we need to have, have Jean start watching out for, you know, we considered one time purchasing cans for, you know, a lot of companies in particular do that, but, um, they provide cans. And there's a lot of people just piling their trash from side of the road. Is that, is that becoming a problem? Uh, you know, there's, and then maybe one place up there on top of the hill where they're, they've got a community pile that piles them and Jean picks it up. Maybe somebody within that.
Are you talking about Polton?
No, I'm talking about it on top on the, on the main drag area.
Are you impressed, Larry?
Oh, called it Polton?
Yeah.
Said Cherokee, I knew that.
Sorry.
Well, that's come, about time we got to a proper thing.
Yeah, so, um, no, but he has, Jean's been getting, going, coming to me and asking me questions. And they, Jean and Stephen have been making notes about things they have questions about. We've been arranging that and there was a community pile, I did send some letters out and address it. And two of the people that were feeding to a community pile have opened their own sanitation again.
So there's can, answer cans up there.
Well, they can put bags and I've also, the problem is, is I've looked into cans because some people have. because some people have said, hey, you know, uh, Santac or this one or that one has cans. The problem is, is that we would have to raise the trash rate to be able to maintain cans and people would much prefer to get their own or to use bags than they would to have our rate go up.
We have any problem with dogs tearing into it, scattering it around or anything?
Not really, most people, they, they know when the trash comes, they put it out, they wait and put it out or they'll, they'll go ahead and get like a generic can or whatever, have to put it in.
Well, you know, they, they got two coyotes who are waiting, we got two foxes that are up on the hill.
We got a bobcat too.
Oh, the cow? They kill them or did they just? They didn't kill them, did they?
No, I almost killed the bobcat, it ran out in front of my car, it was traumatizing, I'm, I'm an animal.
That was an idiot bobcat, wasn't it?
So.
She would catch up. Okay, it sounds like we got a garbage problem, so.
So everyone is fine basically with what we have? What we have right now? Okay, all right.
Would any bob on there?
I think it's, uh, it's a continuing policy that we just need to, and if they're not paying, we need to cut them off. Okay, uh, vote to move the September meeting for Tuesday, September fifth, due to Labor Day, and schedule training and to decide the status of the work session, which is scheduled for all break. Do you have any training upcoming, Dana or his?
Uh, yes, actually, I, when I had planned out the calendar at the beginning of the year, I knew that it was Labor Day, so I went ahead and scheduled the meeting for the following Monday, the problem is, is that is the, uh, Fall Clark Training Conference. It's the same time period every year, uh, Do Live and You Learn, I didn't know.
Is that on Jekyll Island or?
No, oh, that's in Athens.
Seattle or it's just in Athens?
Athens and no home game, thank you. Uh, every other year it falls on a home game and it's a nightmare.
So two days you'll be there, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm, so that's why I thought we could move it to Tuesday, September the fifth, which is the day after Labor Day. And then my other, which is not really a concern, just something I wanted to take into consideration with the uh, fall break school schedules having been released, I took a gander and fall break for both Pickens and Cherokee County falls during the week uh, of the work session, which is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-first. And I want to, I didn't know if any of y'all had, you know, plans, vacations or anything like that since the kids are out of school. So I figured if we're gonna conquer one, we can conquer both or just leave it at the time.
Does that interfere with anybody's plans?
Probably, there's a chance that we won't be here for the fall break.
It must be nice to be able to take vacation.
Everyone's normal.
What's everybody's feelings on that?
We can move it far enough, because I'm a bit too, or we can do it whatever. Far enough, I'm sorry.
Or I can just get.
All right, so let's start with one. Let's vote, let's vote on the, the September fifth on the regular council meeting and then we'll do the work session.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion on September the fifth, change in the meeting date.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, if that, if you have a second, have a second, all right, all in favor, let me, I will raise your right hand.
Who was the second?
You haven't had a run, that's.
Have one in handy. You can pick one, except for our range.
So, and then next would be the work session, do you want to forego it, move it?
The only thing I worry about is, would be that we may have the Pickens County tax. Have you gotten nailed down when we're gonna get that, the figures for the Pickens County taxes?
About eleven fifty-nine and fifteen eight seconds on the day that it's due.
Which is?
I have no idea, that's what I was told, jokingly, that's what I was told. Uh, I have not gotten any numbers yet, they're still working on their numbers, so, uh, as soon as, I mean, last year we didn't get them until October. I, we have a new tax commissioner and his goal was to bring them out sooner. Uh, but I haven't gotten anything yet and I called and chatted with Friday.
Well, you're gonna find working with Darren, I think he's one, he's, he's making a lot of improvements.
Yeah.
Tax, like, tax sales are just bam bam bam, you know.
Yeah, he's getting his feet wet though, I mean, it's, it, Rome was not built in a day, so it's been, you know, he's been making leaps and bounds.
Been there eleven years, so, or something like that, so. Okay, uh, so, we, we want to just cancel the work session in, in August?
It's September.
Or September, I'm sorry.
We're moving to the following million present, if it's spring, right, or about?
Won't we just leave the, uh, leave the, if we have a work session required by something that we have to have, let's just, um, contact and you know, I'm, I'm always glad, I think, uh,
Okay, so we'll leave it and if nothing comes up, then we can always cancel.
That's a good idea.
Okay, that's a good idea.
All righty, next we have to vote on the Pick, keep Pickens beautiful, um, donation. Traditionally, we don't donate to that because you look at the streets and the things that we put in, the city of Nelson is much neater and cleaner than any of the roadways and, uh, in the surrounding areas, so.
Uh, I called because I had gotten the bill, which I, apparently we were paying it sporadically, one year we did, one year we weren't, so that's why I wasn't able to anticipate. Uh, and I called them, we found out the reasoning and they said that uh, one of the benefits for us is that it allows us to be incorporated into ads that they run. Uh, but that was actually a hindrance for us because they included our dumpster weekend in the advertisement, so we had people from all over filling the dumpster rather than residents for whom it was intended because it was advertised in all the papers and I don't want to have that catastrophe again. And then, they said that there's activities such as green ribbon, green lawn, queens, uh, clean sweep, paper shredding, things like that, but um, I really don't see a benefit in paying the money, nor do I see a justification, it does not fit into the category of the greater good for all residents. I mean, that's gonna be up to you all, it's six hundred and twelve dollars that I did not account for because I did not know of its existence. Um, it wasn't paid last year, in other words, we didn't participate.
And we voted not to pay it last year.
I don't know if we voted or not.
I think we did, but, uh, at any rate, uh, we'll entertain a motion, if you have, make a motion if we.
Make a motion, we don't.
Also.
That's, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second, all in favor, let me, I will raise your right hand. All, all against, uh, Mike is opposed. So it's four, uh, four, three to one. Okay, next we have, uh, we have the public appearance. Anybody like to give it to Mike, a public appearance?
There's already somebody.
Oh, Mike, that's Mike's.
I don't even know what address that. Mike, are you not going to?
No.
No.
I don't want to put us on the video.
Okay.
We already know it's possible.
What'd you find today, Mike?
That's the question Tina's supposed to answer. And how tall is it, is the other question? Because it's a violation, once we get over six inches, you're code violation for private property.
Six inches?
On lawn, if your lawn gets up six inches, if it's your flower bed and it's over six inches, you probably are hiding all the flowers.
Okay, moving along, we don't have anybody for public affairs. Next, we have the executive session, uh, on a motion, we'll adjourn to the executive session.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second. Okay, I'll, I'll raise your right hand. Okay, we're adjourned to the executive session.